Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, welcome to Primetime with Alex Stein. Tonight, we're gonna do things a little different because you know what? The world is crashing. It's crashing down all around us. I don't know what to do. You don't know what to do. We all don't have any answers for all the questions that are facing us. But I thought to myself, you know what? I do have an answer. And you know what that answer? The only answer that can heal the pain within. The only answer that can medicate you to a true state of happiness. And that state is through music. And through the sound of my voice, I will heal you. I will help solve the world's most glaring problems. I will heal the children that are sick with the words that I sing for you right now. AOC is my favorite Latina. She put me on the mat, made me a winner. I want to buy you dinner. AOC, unblock me. So we can start our relationship. Cause it ended way too quick. You couldn't handle my shit. And I am so sorry. I will take you on this show, Murray. Because I am that baby's daddy. I am your father. You are my daughter. AOC is the mother. Eric Adams is my brother. Please, if you're listening to these words right now, just relax. Massive inflation causing stagnation. What can we do in this third world nation? I don't know what to say. It's always better to be gay. It's always better to be gay, not yesterday. But today, AOC will turn you gay. Just know that I love you so much tonight. We're drinking Sprite. BLM, not the white. Help my daughter. Give her some water. In Ohio, they are starving. I love you guys. We have a great show for you this evening. I love you, AOC. I'm sorry that I had to sue you, but this is the only way. I hope you enjoy the show.
Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, welcome to the show tonight. I'm your host, Primetime Alex Stein. And tonight, we have a very special guest, a potential new co-host, the one, the only Chase. How are you doing this evening, Chase?
How are you, Alex?
I'm doing good. I just wanna say thank you so much for coming here. You know, this show, we're getting a little bit of complaints because it's, you know, it's not, it's not diverse enough. So we're trying to kinda hit the diversity quota. We wanna be more multicultural, inclusive. So I feel like a person like yourself, young, you could really make the show a lot better. So tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, thanks for having me. My name's Chase. I will, I can put that Texas opinion on your podcast.
I want that Texas opinion. So, so tell me a little bit about it. Tell us a little bit about yourself. Are you single? You're dating?
I'm actually single, just went through a breakup around New Year's.
What happened?
We're just two different people. She's from a different country and I'm American.
90-day whatever fiance where they try to get a green card? No, she wasn't!
No, not that. No.
What was she trying to do?
She was trying to, she was trying to get me to put a ring on it quick.
But did she have a green card?
Yes, she was just trying to marry me quick, but she was, yeah, she did have a-
You're a very handsome man, Chase.
She did have a green card, yes, she did.
So she had a green card? Did she cheat on you or anything?
No, we just didn't see eye to eye. She's Egyptian and I'm American, so we just-
I've never dated. What's dating an Egyptian woman like?
Going to church.
What church? The Church of Scientology? Are you, are you, what church?
Just um-
What church? Oh, you're not a Scientologist?
No.
Have you ever thought about learning about Scientology and L.R. Hubbard?
No.
It's a, it's like, it's really badass religion. Do you have $5,000 to your name?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, it costs $5,000 to join. So what would y'all do at the church?
Well, I actually didn't go with her. I actually went one time, but um, it wasn't really my thing.
Why? Cause she was not, she wasn't very horny or she was pretty?
No.
Sometimes church girls-
Egyptian church is kinda different than American church.
Ah, what's the difference?
It's real deep into it. Boys sit on one side, girls sit on the other side.
Wow, I kinda like that though. Because then I could fart and no girl's gonna smell it. Did you ever fart in there?
No, I didn't. Actually, I went only one time, but-
And how did it go?
It was alright. It was a little, it was a little-
Awkward?
Too much for me.
They worship Jesus. They don't worship Xenu, the Galactic Overlord?
Uh, I don't know who that is.
You don't know? Well, you're not a Scientologist. Okay, so for the people at home watching this, Chase, tell us about your most embarrassing moment.
My most embarrassing moment?
Come on, you know there's something you're embarrassed about. You got caught with your pants down, caught your hand in the cookie drawer, whatever.
I can't even think of a moment right now.
No, no, just say it. What have you done embarrassing? What, you ever peed your pants? I pooped my pants the other day here at work. I almost got fired. What happened?
Uh, I would say my niece is doing my laundry and maybe they said, they seen some skid marks in my butt.
Oh my God, we got poopy skid marks over here, Chase. What the heck? So you gotta, your niece is gonna deal with the pooping skid marks. Oh my gosh, seriously, I got some poopy skid marks right now. Honestly, I don't even wash my underwear. I just-
My buttocks are clean now, though.
Yeah, I don't wash mine. I actually prefer them that way. Okay, so tell us, what do you think about the terror attacks that happened on September 11th, 2001?
Crazy. Changed the world.
It's bad, right?
Changed the world. Yeah, reshaped the whole world after that. What about you? What do you think about it?
Well, I think that the government probably did it in a false flag attack in order to start the Patriot Act and put us in a never-ending war in the Middle East. It killed millions of Muslims unfairly with drone strikes from Barack Obama. He dropped a drone every 20 minutes for eight years. Did you know that?
A lot of conspiracies, yes. I don't know everything, but yes, a lot of conspiracies around it.
He knows! Chase knows! Okay, what about this conspiracy? Did you know that Michelle Obama has a penis?
Um, nah, that's false.
Well, how is that false?
That's false.
How is that false? You haven't seen Michelle Obama? Have you seen the video where Michelle Obama's dong is like, blonk, blonk, blonk? Have you not seen where the dong is just out? You haven't seen that?
No, I haven't.
So you think Michelle has a vagina?
Yes.
How do you, what evidence do you have that Michelle Obama has a vagina?
Pretty lady that has a family.
Family? They don't have any pictures of her pregnant? Are you serious? You really don't think Michelle Obama's a boy?
I have no evidence on that.
Oh my gosh! Who even asked this guy to come be my co-host? This is not the, oh, disagree with Alex show. I don't understand why the Blagues just give me one co-host that will admit that Michelle Obama has a penis?
So you're from around here?
Yeah, I am. I'm from right down the street.
You're from Texas?
Yeah, I'm from Texas, but I don't care about Texas. I care about the size of Michelle Obama's manhood. And I got a guy over here, Chase, wants to talk about Texas. Let me tell you something, Chase, and this is something, and I mean this with all due respect. The world we live in is a world of lies. Do you believe that we're getting told the truth by the people in power?
No, they wanna tell us what they wanna tell us.
So you know that they lie to us, right?
Yes, for sure.
Do you think that there is an agenda right now to make more children transsexual?
No, but people-
What? And now you don't, what about all this drag queen story time? Have you been seeing all the-
Yeah, that is crazy.
That's crazy!
It is crazy.
That's crazy!
It is crazy.
See, but he says it, what did goes, who, how is this my new co-host? He says that they're not sexualizing children on drag shows, then I, Chase, what, are you smoking weed, Chase? Do you smoke weed?
Um, sometimes I don't.
Oh my God, now you got a pothead, 420 over here. All I wanna do is a freaking show and you got a freaking Snoop Dogg out here. Chase, get off my set. Get off my set, Chase. You gotta go. I'm sick of this crap. Go ahead, Chase, and I'm done with this interview. I'm done with this crap. I'm done. Well, welcome back to the show. We had a little bit of technical difficulties, as we like to call it, with our last host, and we're still playing with things here at Primetime with Alex Stein. You know, you never know who's gonna get a seat right next to yours truly. And apparently, Chase, very nice young man, ideologically, we didn't align. So unfortunately, that's the last of young Chase that we're gonna be seeing on this program. But before we get to that, we gotta pay the bills. This is a public service announcement. Manscaped now has beard products and is even going further with their new, brand-new Weed Whacker 2.0. Go ahead and tell the world, the leaders in the below-the-waist grooming are now traveling north of your South Pole with their revolutionary grooming products. The new Weed Whacker 2.0 and their new beard line confirms they have all the best tools for your hygiene toolbox. Time for you to upgrade your game by going to manscaped.com and using our code ALEX for 20% off plus free shipping, free shipping. Gentlemen, meet the Beard Hedger Pro Kit. It is the ultimate package that makes it easier than ever to craft your signature look. It all starts with the cordless electric beard hedger. The beard hedger is tough on hair, but smooth on your face, leading to single-stroke efficiency that brings satisfaction one stroke at a time. The pro kit also comes with four dermatologist-tested formulations for your post-trim care. This includes Manscaped's beard shampoo and conditioner, beard oil, and beard balm to try and moisturize and style and shimmer your new beard. Plus, the kit has three free gifts, a beard brush, a comb, and scissors. So get 20% off and free shipping with our code ALEX at manscaped.com. That's 20% off with free shipping at manscaped.com. Use our code ALEX and always use the right tools for the job with Manscaped. And let me tell you something. I'll be honest, I use Manscaped. My thing's not very big. It's not. I wish it was bigger. I wish the Lord would have blessed me with a bigger package. But I'm able to trim it with these manscaping tools. I'm able to, I'm adding nine centimeters, eight and a half centimeters. I measured it, just looking in. We do a look test, we take pictures of it, we put it next to the remote control, we don't put it next to the remote control. After a pre-trim and a post-trim, you're gaining centimeters. And I know you're looking out there, you're like, how can Manscaped help me? You don't want eight extra centimeters visually on your wiener? Trust me, we all need extra eight centimeters, except for professional pornography stars. They probably are okay, they probably don't need to be trimmed. But they already trim anyway, so maybe that's their secret. Maybe they're really not big. They just trimmed the Manscaped. I don't know. But I'm telling you this. If you're lacking, start getting those Weed Whackers and start attacking because those pubes got to go. Alright, so we have an incredible show for you this evening. You know, it started off a little bit of razzle-dazzle, a little, you know, fighting, but sadly, our next guest, it seems like this next interview can be a little combative as well. We're bringing on a guy named Michael Guglielmo. Michael, welcome to the show.
What's happening, my friend?
Now we can finally hear you, Michael. We got it working. Welcome to-
We need to a lot to catch up with the technology.
Okay, it only took two times, it only took two tries. Okay, so Michael, tell us about yourself. How has it been? For the people that are playing at home that might not know, Michael went to his local New Hampshire school board dressed as Julius Caesar and he went and basically trolled them like I do using a form called Culture Jamming. So explain this, like, what was your motivation? Why Julius Caesar?
So what happened was, you know, I went to school and there was the cross dresser there and I made some complaints about it. And then he started to provoke me and escalate. I made, first I went to the principal, then I went to the superintendent, then I went to the school board. All silence. And finally, this last day, I went there, and he's standing there with his, you know, he's in some Krishna outfit. And he's standing there with his arms crossed and his glasses on, he's staring at me, he's staring at me. So I pulls up, I pick up my daughter, I says, stop here for a minute. I get out of the car, right, and I walk about 30 yards to him. All the teachers that are standing around him, they flee. They all run. The biggest guy there turns, he goes to the corner, turns his head, I walk up to him, I says, can I take your picture? And he says, uh, he says, well, what, I said, I just want your picture. Can I take your pic? We give you legal permission to take your picture. The closest to you, he said yes. The closest teacher to me, 10 feet away, my daughter's homeroom teacher, she said, I said, you heard that? She said, yeah, he said, he said he takes picture. So I said, uh, I said, okay. I stepped back and I said, give me a big smile, baby girl. Bam. I took the picture and then, you know, then I went to the school board dressed like Caesar because, you know, you have to demonstrate between fact and fiction to these people because they're illogical and they're so fanatical that they don't wanna hear anyone's voice but their own. And if you oppose them, they'll cancel you. So all the teachers, a lot of the parents in my district, they were afraid to oppose them because they didn't wanna, you know, they'll be canceled. They'll call the HRs, they'll get them fired from their job. You can't cancel me. I'm retired. I work for myself, man.
Michael, we can't cancel you, but after doing the interview, a bunch of people sent me messages and I had to ask you about this. So you did some great, you did some great philanthropy. You were, you lost your son at a very young age, five years old, it was terrible. And then you became one of the leaders in-
That's what the shield is.
Yes, but real quick, I just wanna clarify this. So you became a leader in bone marrow transplants and your story was kind of, you know, a story of rehabilitation. So explain that, cause people, if they look you up, Michael, you have, for the people that might not know your background history, and I know you're gonna see a lot of articles about how Michael turned his life around, so I'm not trying to gotcha. But you had a shootout with the cops, Michael. That's really dangerous.
By the sword, man. I went to kill a drug dealer, man. That's a civic duty. Come on.
Okay, so you went to go kill, and I think we have this graphic, I don't know if we have this. So, and then you got arrested. So tell us what happened here, Michael, cause everybody's sending these pictures. And I'm like, Michael's such a nice guy. So can you, can you at least give us some justification on what is this picture all about?
This guy right here.
I did that.
What'd you do? Tell us what happened. Michael's such a nice guy. It looked like you almost killed him.
I had a bad night, man.
Drinking.
Well, we all get drunk and like to have a party. I mean, come on, there's nothing wrong with that, but I just, I want you to be safe though, Michael, cause honestly, this is, this is my whole point is you do have a little bit of a history. You've turned that around, let's be honest. But, but don't you think some people could have validity in saying, oh man, this guy does have a wild history? He is wild. What do you say to those people?
Well, you know, hey, I've never claimed to be an angel and I've done, I did the crime, I did the time. So hey, you know, we no longer operate in this society by civil death. We don't, we don't embrace the vestiges of civil death. But anyway, my, my son was born and within days he was deathly ill. With, you know, I went from hospital to hospital. Finally, I end up in Boston Children's Hospital and they told me, you know, your son's gonna die for his first birthday. You know, if you don't get him a bone marrow transplant. At that point, he was six years, six months old, so I said, you know, what are the chances? And they said, well, one in 20,000. I said, yeah, man, no problem. I'll put 20,000 people in the registry. I started a huge campaign. It was called Save Giovanni. And I just started going everywhere doing bone marrow drives. I did bone marrow drives with the unions, with the bikers, with police stations. I did bone marrow drives everywhere with everybody. We organized the first bone marrow drive in the history of Italy in defiance of the Italian government. Of course, they wouldn't let me in the country, though, but you know, hey, that's the way it is, you know?
I know. It is insane, but like I said, you have a little bit of a criminal history. And then this is the last question I wanna ask, Michael, and I love you. I don't wanna come across as, like I'm a gotcha at all. I just wanna address these things, since people ask me about this. So I don't know if you have this other graphic. I don't know if the producer has that. Michael, it's a-
Yeah, that's a, that's a good one.
Please tell us, clarify this, cause this is pretty, pretty bad. They're saying that, you know, something happened with a juvenile. So can you explain this?
Yeah, absolutely. So check this out. So I go into the, the local, I was a celebrity all over. So I go into the local power broker restaurant, O's Steak and Seafood, where all the, all the political who's in, who's live, right? So I go in there and this Fred Keach, citywide counselor, he's standing in the way. So I said, excuse me, can you, can you get out of my way? He moves out of his way. There's three hot-looking brunettes at the bar. I go sit down and I just picked up one of my buddies from prison. He just got out doing 25 years for murder. And, you know, I wanna bring him out for a meal, so we're sitting in the restaurant, Fred Keach is staring at me, staring at me, staring. You know, I don't like being stared at. So I told him, I said, listen, you wanna fuck me, you wanna fight me. Stop looking at me or go back to your fucking table before I embarrass you in front of your friends. So then my friend starts getting agitated. You know what? We spent 17 years in prison fighting people, man. I mean, you know, we don't like, we don't have, you know, high conflict resolution skills. So I'm walking out of the bar and there's three girls at the bar, the one girl in the middle of the bar, hot-looking brunette. I rub my hand across her back, my fingertips only, my fingertips, to get her attention. Her father jumps up, starts screaming, you just sexually assaulted my girl, my daughter, I said, what? So I turned on him, I go to attack him. My buddy jumps in the middle, the fire marshal gets up, he's got his phone in my face. You know, some, some really high-power political figures are there, I don't wanna name. He gets a phone in my face saying, I called the police. I said, fine, I'm okay, call the police. I don't give a shit. I'll be, I'll be waiting for him here. I said, get that phone out of my face before I smash it up your ass.
No, and Michael, and Michael, and all of this, you didn't get charged for this? You were never convicted of this? I just wanna put this out there.
No, this is why I was, I pled guilty to simple assault because any touching of anybody is unlawful. So they, they, so they conspired with the Manchester, with the Convent Police Department to overcharge me. Then they leaked it to the press before it was even released by the, uh, by the, by the, by the police department. And they even tried to get two of my friends that were the editors of two local newspapers to put me on the front cover. So first they charged me with, with public disturbance, disturbing the peace, criminal threatening, uh, simple assault and sexual assault. Then a week later, they charged me with forcible sexual assault on a girl sitting at a bar drinking who turned, who happened to be 16 years old. Why was she at the bar?
Hey, I agree with you. There shouldn't have been a child in the bar. And listen, all of this ended up getting worked out, but I just, cause Michael, you've gone so viral. Where now everybody's saying, oh, because you know, at the end of the interview, I said, you're gonna join my team, and I want you on my team. Honestly, Mike, I just, you know, I just gotta do a little bit of background check before I have you on the show. So listen, we don't need it, we can, we can-
I have verified copies right here.
I believe you. We can move on from that. I just had to, I had to get this verified because people were asking me about it. So Michael, what do you have planned next? And this is what I'm gonna tell you. Listen, I believe in second chances more than anybody. I believe in third chances, fourth chances. That's what America is built on. So listen, I'm still, I still support you, Mike, cause I hear your story and I know, or at least I feel like you're not lying. I feel like you're telling me the truth. So what-
That's all I do is tell the truth. Listen, you never have to remember the truth, ever. If you're gonna be a liar, you gotta remember every single lie you tell. In order to remember every single lie you tell, you need to be a genius. If you're not a genius, you got no business lying and you never gotta remember the truth. Now, you wanna know what I'm about? You watch my TED Talks, my TED Talks, my Google animal TED Talks. I registered 100,000 people in the bone marrow registry, saved over 500 lives. Yeah, I've never professed to be a good guy.
Michael, you have saved lives. That's why I want, definitely wanna go. Michael saved a lot of lives. So tell us though, Michael, how can we continue to troll these school boards and wake people up? Because I had to go to 20 meetings before I got to go super viral. You went viral in your first one, so are you gonna stop or what's the plan going forward?
So last night, I went to a, I went to a, I went to the Dover School Board meeting. Oh my God, they were waiting for me there. They called me a child molester. They tell I touched little boys, I do this, everything you can imagine. They said that I called the girl up and threatened her. I called the, I called the Dover Police Department. I said, you got any, you got any criminal charges against me? You got any investigation against me? They said, no. I said, I'll tell you what, I got my call logs. Go get hers, cause she's a liar. So they set the whole thing up. I went up to the board, right? And I said, will you allow me to speak? And they said, well, you're not a resident of this, of this town. I said, I am a resident of this state and I'm a resident of the United States and I have a First Amendment right to speak and you're denying me that speech while you're letting these people hurl, hurl, hurl hate and intolerance. I said, you people talk about, you know, you're the party of tolerance and there's no place for hate and inclusiveness. They're nothing but divisive haters and they're intolerant and all they wanna do is impose our will of grooming our children. And they're doing that with economic sanctions, with the, with the liberal media carrying their water, canceling people's lives. You can't cancel me. So bring it on!
I love it, Michael. We cannot cancel you.
You can't cancel me!
You've been, you've been to hell and back.
To talk because they don't wanna lose their jobs. But you can't, you can't take my job. I am the head of my own HR department. Make all the complaints you want.
Okay.
They're usurping people's parental rights like a feudal lord. They're depriving people of water and bread. That's what they're doing. And let me tell you something, tick tock, tick tock, the reset is coming. There's parents across the country like me standing up and we're fed up with this radical sexualized gender confusion that you're imposing on children. I mean, it's tantamount to child abuse, what they're doing. And the big media is supporting it with this elitist backing. But let me tell you something. The Democrats, people are, they're fleeing the Democratic Party because they don't wanna be painted with this, this radical brush and something else. You know, the water boys, the water boys, the big liberal media, they're saying, their audiences are leaving in droves. Look at their ratings.
They're watching this! That's what I'm saying, Mike. They're watching this!
Ha, joke!
That's what I'm saying. They wanna watch the real dope.
Oh, Don Lemon, he'll be gone too, all of them.
Well, Michael, Michael, I love having you on the show.
You have a little passion, you know?
Yo, you got the passion. You're gonna keep kicking butt. You need to go hit the school boards, you need to go to the- But you gotta hit the city council meetings too.
They told me that I couldn't speak at the Dover meeting, right? Guess what? I'm gonna go rent the room there. I'm gonna become a resident and I'll be speaking at the next meeting. And you know what? I'm trying to raise money so that I can rent the room in every school district and I'm gonna go to every school board. And I'm not going away until the Department of Education maintains its duty to engage the best interest of a child. And that means you teach truth, not lies. You teach facts, not fiction. And you teach biology, not your social agenda, whether it be left or right. You teach kids, let kids be kids. Period.
You said it, you said it great. Okay, but last question, last question. You know, I'm kind of considered a villain. Do you think that you're a villain that's been radicalized and now you're fighting against the, you know, mainstream agenda, the wokeness, or, you know?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I'm fighting the woke, absolutely, man. I believe, you know, it's, it's Aristotelian. Not Aristotelian, but I'm tilting. It's chaotic. It's chaotic is what it is.
I don't even know what that means, really, Michael. Well, listen, I love you. Keep on fighting that war. And everybody wants to know, what kind of cigarettes? Did you smoke Marlboro Red cigarettes? That's what they're guessing.
Yeah, they're Marlboro Reds.
Ah, we knew it! They knew in the chat. Alright, Mike, keep dominating, keep pressing these woke freaks because it takes freaks to fight freaks. I know that sounds crazy, but-
You're damn right.
We gotta, we gotta give them their own medicine.
We got 2 million hits on that repost of crisis in the classrooms, but I just got the video from the Dover School Board. Oh my God, it's, it's punishing, punishing.
Alright, well, time to post that video, Michael. Okay.
Hail Caesar!
Hail Caesar. And Michael, we'll talk to you soon. We're gonna keep you updated. You always have a place to be able to, we're gonna give you your side of the story. That's what we do and we love second chances. We love redemption.
My son Giovanni really redeemed me, but you just did again.
Oh, you're the man. Alright, see you, Mike. Have a good one. Keep on, keep up the good fight. That's all we like, Michael. You know, listen, he had a storied past. We had him back on. We wanna ask him about it. He answered the questions, you know. You guys are gonna be able to interpret his answers and just come to your own conclusions, but for me, it sounds like he wasn't convicted. I mean, he told me about it. I don't know. It's, there's three sides to every story. His side, the girl's side, and the truth. So we'll just kind of play it by ear and see if Michael gets in any more legal trouble in the near future. And sadly, I hope he doesn't, but I think, um, Michael's gonna be staying in the news for the foreseeable future. Well, you know what I do, who I am excited to see in the foreseeable future? My mother. And I miss mom. Mom, I haven't talked to you in a while. Are you there, mom?
Hello, Mr. Stein. Yes, unfortunately, your, your mother is not working at the moment, but I am here to help you.
Wait, why is my mom not working? So who is this? Hello?
Yes, this is John, your mother, the, the premium Jonathan, if you'd like to call me by my proper name.
Jonathan? Okay. You don't sound like a Jonathan. Okay, where are you from, Jonathan?
That's a bit racist on your end, so I can-
Where are you from, Jonathan? Where are you right now?
I'm from Fort Worth.
Texas?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Alright, well, okay. Well, where's my mom? That's who I'm here to talk to. I uploaded her consciousness into a computer and I'm able to talk to her.
You uploaded your dead mother's consciousness into a sex robot?
No, no, that's not, that's, no, it wasn't a sex robot. It was just a regular transhumanistic, gender-neutral robot.
Mr. Stein, I'm looking at your account right now and it says you ordered the premium sex robot preloaded with the AOC package?
That, yeah, I ordered that one, but that was an accidental order and then they had a kind of a return deal, so I thought that, I thought that I could use that same technology as my mom. Where's my mom? This is, I didn't buy, I didn't upload my mom's consciousness to a computer to have sex with it, okay?
Okay, okay, Mr. Stein, I understand your frustration.
Yeah.
Now, for five Bitcoin, I can make this go away very quickly.
Five Bitcoin? What are you, am I hacked right now? What is going on? Why am I talking to a guy in New Delhi, India right now?
Mr. Stein, Mr. Stein, I understand your frustration.
Yes, Jonathan, I don't think you're in Fort Worth and I wanna talk to my dead mom and I'm having trouble. It's very frustrating.
Mr. Stein, I understand, but I'm looking at your account right there and it says you ordered the premium sex robot package with the AOC preloaded.
That was an accidental order. I got the orders merged. Somehow I merged them. Listen! I don't wanna talk about the sex robot that I accidentally uploaded my mom's consciousness to. I wanna be able to talk to my mom, not have sex with her. So is she there?
Uh, no, Mr. Stein.
Let me speak to your manager. I'm done talking to you. I wanna speak to your manager.
Mr. Stein, I am afraid to tell you that I am the manager.
You're not, you're the manager, Jonathan, in Fort Worth? No, I don't, I hate the, oh, I'm the manager, man. I wanna speak to your superior, 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 superior.
Okay, Mr. Stein, that is a bit racist, but if you'll hold for one second, I can hook you up.
Superior, superior, manager!
Yes, sir, okay.
Your wait time is 69 hours.
What, 69 hours? Oh my gosh. It looks like we're not gonna hear from him till tomorrow, or I don't even know, 24 hours in a day. What, how many days is, okay, well, listen. Things aren't going great for me right now. My mother's consciousness has been hacked by a guy in India trying to get Bitcoin. and exposed me for having sex with a robot designed with AOC's likeness. That is a different robot than my mom robot. I want that clarified, just like Michael Googly Elmo. He gave us the kind of backstory. Yes, I do have a sex doll with a consciousness of AOC as well. It was a two for one type deal. Sometimes it's a long story, but I'm not having sex with my mother's consciousness. I want that known. Okay, well, with that, I think we have on our next guest. But before we get to the guest, be sure to subscribe to Primetime with Alex Stein on Apple Podcasts, Spotify or wherever else you get your podcasts. And when you do, make sure to leave a five star review because I read every single review. And if you got a message for me, leave it, baby. I'm going to read that message and I might cry, I might celebrate, I might dance. I don't know how I'm going to feel. You're the one that needs to make me feel some sort of way. And you can do that by going and not only subscribing, but leaving a five star review wherever you get your audio only podcasts. Even though this is a visual show, sometimes it's nice to hear my voice while you're doing some of your nice chores that we all have to do. So please, go freaking leave a review so Primetime Nan Nan can keep his job. That's what I'm asking you. Call to action, do it now, now. All right, now we bring on our next guest. He's, uh, the one, the only Maj Torre and he created, what, what is this? Black Guns Matter? What is it? What is this? What is this Guns Matter? Maj, I'm sick of guns. Isn't that, what is it? School shootings matter? Why don't we change the slogan to that?
So, school shootings, do you know how many, uh, school shootings there are? How much of the percentages they make up of deaths?
Uh, 110% I'm guessing because, uh, no, that's not true. They don't, kids don't die 100% from school shootings.
No, they don't make up 110% of school shootings. They make up actually less than 1%.
That doesn't seem, wait, no, 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 that's impossible. The mainstream media says that if you're a young kid, you should wear a bulletproof vest or buy a bulletproof vac backpack in order to survive a school shooting. The media would not lie, Maj, come on.
Well, every now and then, Alex, they do lie. Every so often, once every like 30, 40, 50 years, they tell they're, they're untrue.
Wow, okay. Listen, I hope people are not actually, I, I don't want you guys to feel like Maj is telling the truth. This guy's a libertarian. He like doesn't like rules or laws. Please make sure to go get quadruple vaccinated and make sure if you have a gun, there's a buyback program in your neighborhood where they'll give you a $25 gift card to Chili's. Okay, so Much, tell me this, well, I actually am Texas. I love guns. I shoot them, I shoot them all the time. New Year's, I just blast them in the air. I always get in trouble for this. But they say where there are more guns, there's less gun violence. Is that a conspiracy or is that true?
No, that's actually true. Um, Dr. Uh, John Lott wrote a great book about that. It's called More Guns, Less Crime. And it's not, a lot of times what happens is people will say it and they'll think that we're calling for actual like, hey, we want more guns so we can have more crime. That's actually not the case. Where there's areas where there's, uh, more safe and responsible firearms owners, right? The, the rapey guys don't get to rape women that are armed, that have the means to defend themselves. So violent crimes and things like that historically are lower in areas where there's a lot of, of safe and responsible firearms owner.
Hey, tell me this though, uh, I was, Jon Stewart went viral where he was talking, he tried to give some kickback. And the guy, the guy that was interviewing him didn't come correct with the stats. When he does talk about young children that die, explain it. Isn't it oftentimes suicide? Isn't that the leading cause of gun violence? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's over 60%. I would have loved for Jon Stewart and anybody, I, I think Jon Stewart has some good takes on some things. I like this position on COVID. But here he was absolutely wrong and the, you know, the, the politician that he spoke to didn't really have the stats. Over 60% of, uh, violence associated with death, excuse me, violence associated with firearms and death are suicides. I think a lot of times too, what they don't tell you too, there's a great book that, um, Bill Gates reads it, reads it. It's called How to Lie with Data and Statistics. What they don't tell you is, let's say if I'm the good guy and I shoot a bad guy, clearly a bad guy.
Yeah.
They count me stopping the threat with the bad guy. If he unfortunately dies, they count that as gun violence too. So they're playing a real slick game with the stats. That's why we have to make sure that we're, you know, articulating this to the people so they understand it for what it actually is, not the stat game.
And you know, it always worries me for the people that are talking about taking away our guns. In the end, the guns don't leave. It's just the military, the police and the criminals have the guns. So I'm just saying, what is your idea for, I guess, how do we solve this people? Or how do we change people's mindset? Because guns are always going to exist, not like guns are going to go away.
The, the reality is none of these people are really anti-gun. There is, there is very few people that are actually anti-gun. Because, um, if you say, hey, we need to get these guns off the street. And if they're saying, even if they're extremely outright saying it, you know, what's the kid David Hogg and Beadle? These guys will say, hell yeah, we're coming for your ARs, hell, all of these different things. If you ask them, you say, okay, do you feel the same way about law enforcement and, uh, you know, military not having firearms too? Quite naturally, they'll say, no, not the police. They're a special type of American citizen. So they actually aren't anti-gun. They just want the monopoly of violence to be in the potential hands of the state. The problem with that is it's the exact opposite of the framework of our nation. Our nation was created during a time when dudes was like, yo, we don't like King George. We not really rocking with this whole British thing, tyranny, over taxation, being told what to do without having the means to defend ourselves. So the founders of this place with their contradictions here and there, the founder said, hey, let's make a constitution. Let's have that Bill of Rights. First one, we get to say what we want. Second, we get to defend what we just said. And I think what happens a lot of times is the arguments are not presented to these people in a very succinct way. Am I a leftist? Absolutely not. Are a lot of my friends and family, I live in Philadelphia, they are leftists. We have to articulate these points to the, to the, you know, Americans that might be on the political opposite. And in a way that we, they don't feel like we're trying to attack them. At, at, at least the people that are trying to be, you know, uh, uh, you know, open to, to what we have to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, genuine, it got to be a genuine conversation.
Yeah, most of these people don't even, you know, they're just so stuck in the ways. And I think that's why, like, I, I try to consider myself even more of a populist and just, you know, conservative quote unquote. Because even both people on both sides now, and you see like a lot of this infighting with Trump and DeSantis. I'm like, man, now all these conservatives are really looking clowny, kind of like how the liberals look. So it's very hard to even like ideologically just go to one side because then you're stuck on that side. So what do you, how do you freaking balance that as a black man that loves guns, that is a libertarian? Because I want you to be the status quo liberal. So how do you fight against that?
Balance. So the best type of economy as we're seeing right now is more of a mixed economy, right? The, the freedom that we have in America, and I'll tie this into my personal philosophy. The freedoms that we have, I'm a libertarian, but I am more conservative in my, uh, personal life. I am fiscally conservative. I also, as a libertarian, respect that someone else has the complete, uh, freedom to do the exact opposite of what I want to do. That's what makes America great. The, the thing there is to have that balance to say, hey, listen, whatever you're doing as an adult, if it does not violate someone's property or their body, if you have the right, you have the right to do that, even if I morally disagree with it. I may think it's repugnant. If you decide that, you know, you want to slather yourself up with butter every Wednesday. If you're doing it in the comfort of your own home and you're not asking me to pay for your butter, you have the freedom to do that. That balance in articulating it while recognizing that even the people that do or have value systems that I absolutely am a 100% opposed to, if they're an American citizen, they're an American citizen. I want to respect them as an American. They do not have to agree with me. They can live their value systems the way that they want. And in a year, two, three, four, five years, we'll see that. My friends that voted for Biden, it's been two years. And a lot of those guys are tapping back in with me like now, like, yo, bro, I, I, I think I was wrong there. Now, if I were to burn that bridge, now we don't have room to, to, you know, uh, commune as Americans, as humans. And so for me, that balance is just a, a high level of tolerance. The struggle is when a lot of times conservatives, because we know, and I say conservative, because again, I'm fiscally and socially conservative, we have a, we struggle with freedom of choice. Because we know that some of the things that we do are better. Historically, we got the data, we got the facts, we have the history on our side. We say freedom, but when someone has the freedom to do the opposite, we go, oh, we don't know if we want them to do that. Again, if it's not violating somebody's property or their body or their stuff, they have the right to do that. And nine times out of 10, if they being goofy with it, if we don't burn that bridge, that person will come to us a little bit later on. All of my friends, COVID started, the lockdowns, the so-called COVID, anti-gun friends. Man, you would think I was selling drugs and like the way people was asking me for ammo.
Yeah.
You know, so we just got to, just have respect for each other.
And, and you nailed it. It's like I said, like at the beginning of the pandemic or even with a lot of other stuff, the war in Ukraine, all these people. I, I disagree with a lot of people, but I don't want to automatically alienate them because then we never have a chance to actually come to some sort of agreement. So I think that that is the best method is like, we don't just throw people away. And I'm not trying to get mad at the left, but they do that more. They throw people away, you know, if they're not on their side. For me, it's like, listen, I'm going to give everybody, like you said, their own right to choose their own opinion.
Do you know, you and I have disagreed on Twitter?
I'm sure, I'm sure we disagreed a lot. What did we disagree on? Remind me.
We disagreed when Dana White.
Oh yeah, slapped that girl. But Maj, what are you talking about? See, this is the thing, no, and I want to hear your thing because they say equal rights equals left. But when he slapped her, first of all, that's his wife. He's a UFC fighter. If she slapped him 10 times, that's nothing. So I remember I got killed for that. Everybody said equal rights equals left. So why is it okay for him to beat her ass after she hit him?
So no, wait, Alex, he did not beat her ass.
He knocked her around. He's a, wait, Maj, he cheated, he gave her an old right, left. He gave her the whole shimmy sham, right, left.
Look, she did this to him. She was hitting him first, right?
Yes, yes, yes. I pay a woman on the internet to hit me like that much harder and I don't hit her back.
But look, but listen, we not going kink shame, no. I can't kink shame you for the things that you into. When he came up and he slapped her, now would I have done that? No, I'll, I'll concede to that point, right? But I think what happens a lot of times is a lot of, um, people, male or female, right? They'll do things, they'll, they'll throw stones and hide their hands. A lot of times I've had women attempt to attack me. Now, as a personal, a, a, a person that deals with self-defense, if a woman has, because what you said was, there's never a reason to hit a woman. And I was like, I don't know, bro. If she's got a knife and she can close 30 feet and within two to three seconds, I don't know, bro. I might have to grip her up. I might have to do X, Y and Z. So from a self-defense perspective, I'm going to get out of there. I'm going to try to, you know, stop the threat. And if that happens to be a woman and I, bro, I, I got to make it home to the babies.
No, and I love that. But listen, this is what, this is what we got to really think. And this is what I talk about a lot is gender roles. I like gender roles. You know, I think there are roles that a woman can do better than a man, whether it's nurturing, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, sociological stuff that a woman can handle in the home that a man can't and vice versa. So I like gender roles. Let me tell you something, Maj, unless that girl had a Glock on her, even if she had a knife, if some woman tried to stab me, I would whoop her ass. Like I'm saying, it's not a fair fight. I know that sounds crazy, I'm saying, there's never going to be a fair fight. In a gender role, I'm the man with the plan. You're a little lady that would get, you know, worked up in a second.
Do you know what I think Dana White was actually trying to do? And, and again, he apologized, so I'm not saying that I speak for him or anything like that. I think he got caught in, I think they had been drinking. I think, not that it justifies it. I think that he was like, you're trying to beat the hell out of me back up. And she kept coming at him. And I think if he would have thought about that, because you're right, he is bigger than her, he, all of that. And he did apologize, you know? Now, as far as the equal rights, equal lefts thing, I think that's just stuff guys say on the internet because.
But Maj, a lot of people say, see, I think you're, you're giving a very nuanced, good answer. And that's like I said, even if you disagree with me, I still like you. I don't, I don't really care. But a lot of these guys were not giving the nuanced answer to you or, oh, if, if I was threatened, they were just saying, oh, that bitch, she should get it. Because this is the problem too. No, this is the problem with this dating world. And, and this is why a lot, a lot of men, and this is just conspiracy or speculation, a lot of men are getting radicalized to hate women. And I'm, I'm seeing that especially on the right. And then the left, they're hating women differently by putting trans people up, by saying Dylan Mulvaney is a real woman and getting to see. So they're like anti-woman in a way that they're trying to like, you know, uh, um, like take that culture away from a woman, right? Now the right is like, oh, women are less than men, women shouldn't vote. Now, I don't go that far right, but do you see that where both sides kind of have a, almost like a woman hatred?
The, the struggle that happens when you are, your conversation is more about, I want to be right as opposed to what's right for America. When you do that, you're, you're quite naturally going to want to go to one of these corners, right? This is the reason why the founding fathers, especially guys like George Washington, did not want party systems. Now, I'm talking about parties because it now just becomes about my team is better than your team, right? Right, left, conservative, you know, liberal, as opposed to saying, okay, listen, if you guys want to use the free market enterprise and you are at liberty to buy land and if you guys want to have a commune on that land and you want to practice communism on that land, you are free to do so.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm not doing it. However, after you guys run out of food or one of the persons, you know, the owner of the land or the person that has the grapes or the whatever that comes to power and says, well, it's going to be done a little bit differently this way. When you have the conversation about no system of checks and balances or the owner or the state owning the means of production or, you know, we're going to ration these out equally, no matter the fact that that person did 90% of the work. You'll show up back and have this conversation with me about free market enterprise. I think that's the thing that happens and I'm seeing this a lot in our conservatives. And it used, I, I saw it a lot more before the Mises Caucus took over the Libertarian Party. I saw it in libertarian circles too. We absolutely see it on the left. There is no way to have a nuanced conversation, an objective space based in freedom. Because again, even more so now, we're seeing guys, they have more of an authoritarian thing. And I think it is a reflection of the fact that the left has went so far left that now a lot of people on the right are doing this massive overcorrection to the right. But an overcorrection is not correct because it's not balanced. The system of checks and balances, the freedom for someone to do a thing, if it's not violating somebody else's property or their body. This liberty concept is what we have to have longer format conversations about. The problem is everybody wants to say, I'm right, as opposed to doing the thing that again, is right for America. And if we can get on that wavelength, we can course correct the direction of our nation. Because to be honest, man, we're going in a very bad direction.
Yeah, and I think everybody would agree with you, the direction we're, we're going is terrible. is terrible, but I really liked your, your term course. We're overcorrecting and that's causing a problem too. Because like when you overcorrect a car, that'll make you spin out. So no, we live in a very, very scary world where people are, I believe, were told a lot of lies. So let's get more into pop culture. One of my favorite players in the NBA is a guy named Ja Morant, and he's in a little trouble. No, he's, he's a little suspended right now because he's been drinking and partying and having fun. And he's a young kid, like I know he's getting, you know, a lot of whatever, negative publicity because of this. So what do you think about Ja? Cause he's got the guns. The reason why I bring it up is he's got the guns. I don't think there should be anything illegal with him holding a gun in a live stream, quote unquote. So, so what do you think Ja is doing as a gun rights activist? Cause he has a lot of gun content and then, you know, how does he rectify a situation?
I don't think he, I think the thing that, there's several things that Ja has done wrong in my opinion. I'll go with the veggies first, then we'll get to the fruit and the dessert.
Cool.
Veggies first. He has no firearms training. The way that he grabbed that firearm, he tech, that's not brandishing because brandishing is presenting the firearm in a menacing way to attempt to threaten or intimidate someone. He did not do that. The second issue that he has is, as it relates to firearms, he had a really trash gun. I think it was chambered in 380.
Wait, wait, slow down. I had to cut you off. You're saying Ja didn't even have a good gun? So, so, cause he was holding it live stream, like you're right, he didn't brandish it. He wasn't using it in a threatening manner. He was trying to show it off. But you're telling me the gun that he had was a piece of, he makes a hundred million dollars and he had some crappy gun?
I think he was going along the lines of something that I can have and carry small. And a lot of people that don't shoot make that mistake. A lot of guys behind the counter will tell women, get a smaller gun, smaller guns have less weight, especially if they're chambered in nine, they're gonna give you the same amount of recoil with a smaller gun. So it's the equivalent that I give there is it can be the same wind in the air. If you got a big plane, you're not gonna feel that turbulence because of the weight. If you have a small plane, same amount of wind, you're gonna feel all of those bumps. So.
Wait, Maj, I had to cut you off. You're so brilliant because everybody says, oh, I wanna fly in the private jet. And I know a guy that flies private and now he stopped because it's, the turbulence is so bad. The bigger jet, you don't feel the turbulence. So the bigger the gun, it actually swallows some of that kickback. Wow, okay. So he had a bad gun. He didn't brandish it, sorry. Now let's get to the kit and caboodle, the dinner, the entree and dessert.
And that's it. I, I think he needs to get, you know, I'm open for Ja. The reality is.
Me too, I love Ja. I, I, one thing I wanna say, I hope we're not kicking him down. He's an incredible player, young guy. I think he's gonna be, his career is gonna be just fine. He just probably needs to clean up a little bit. He's just being a little loose right now.
But, but okay, so, so when you say clean up, okay, he has a $50,000 grill. First of all, Ja is the face of Powerade. He's got a Nike deal. 24 years old, $200 million contract. Okay. Where he was celebrating was among friends and family and that's, he's probably got that whole section. So he's not brandishing, he didn't do anything unlawful. We gotta remember the fact that Ja is in Memphis. A few months ago, Young Dolph was murdered in Memphis, the town that he's from. Dr. Martin Luther King was murdered where? In Memphis. And I'm not associating Ja with Dr. Martin Luther King. I'm saying that's a violent city. So he has the means to defend himself. I looked over the NBA rules. The NBA rules, he can't bring a firearm to the games.
Yeah, or practice.
Practice facilities or any NBA related events. He didn't do that.
Yep.
So he didn't, he didn't break any laws. No one was hurt. I do think, you know, as a safe and responsible firearms owner, I would love to reach out to Ja to get him some, you know, basic firearms safety.
Wait, Maj, we need to do that. I'm gonna try to put in a call. We need to get you because that would actually help his image a lot. I think that would help him a lot. And when I say loose, he just, listen, he's a young man, he's able to drink, but it's like, hey, listen, you are the face of Powerade, you are the face of the Memphis Grizzlies. You do have to hold yourself to a little, once you become the franchise player, I know these guys wanna continue to party like you're in college, but you do have to hold yourself up to a little higher standard of professionalism. And I think that's just, he's just not mature. He'll realize that, I believe, after this.
If, if, if the NBA suspended him for 50 games, I want the NBA to be just as critical of themselves. I want the NBA.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right. I'm saying, he should have got a 20 game suspension max.
I don't even think he should have got a suspension.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I'm saying 10 games or something, if you're gonna give him one, but, but go ahead. You're gonna hold the NBA to a higher standard. Yeah, I'd like to, even though they love the slave labor in China, like they care about civil rights or some sort of, you know, plague on humanity, they're the ones that are plaguing humanity. So I mean, the NBA is as crooked as a dog's hind leg, as I say. So I mean, what, how does the NBA rectify it?
They take him off a suspension.
Okay.
Here, 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 I will make, Black Guns Matter will be available to every NBA player that wants safe and responsible firearms ownership. We will do it for free. We, if they get us there, we will go to every center of the NBA has across this great nation to tell guys about, no, you shouldn't. First of all, you should have had it in a holster. We can give that a lesson on safety and responsible ownership, but let that young man play basketball. He's generating billions of dollars for the league. The young people wanna see him, the work ethic that these athletes have. Now again, politically, I don't know his politics. I don't have to.
I bet he's not even that political. Sorry, just cutting out, I bet Ja, he's a kid. I wasn't that super political when I was in my early twenties.
I think the, I think the NBA should say, hey, we, we, we are serious about mental health. There's 60% of deaths in, associated with firearms as it relates to suicides. We wanna bring people in on, you know, they can bring in Walk the Talk America, that's a firearms and mental health organization. There's an organization called Kids to Kings that deals with young people. They can bring Black Guns Matter in for some conflict resolution, firearms safety, and let that young man play basketball, man. I mean, telling someone that has done this their entire life and they're happy, they're excited, no one had an issue when he had the $50,000 grill until he started exercising his second amendment rights.
You nailed it. That's when they really freaked out. As soon as he had a gun, that they can't have the face of the NBA, the new face of the NBA, you know, glamorizing that lifestyle. So they took him out. Okay, before we go, we gotta wrap it up. So you're talking about early guns, not to get a small gun. If, what, what gun do you recommend to, for somebody, you know, that doesn't have a gun? Because a lot of people don't have guns and I would recommend actually going out there and doing some sort of research and looking into, you know, how to protect yourself best. So what do you think is the best protection device?
If we're, if we're talking about handgun and, and no information, obviously there's different things, hand size, do you have big fingers? Do you have long fingers? Your height, your weight, all of those different things. But in the middle of the Venn diagram, if I had to sight unseen, tell someone, I would say Glock 19. A Glock is in essence, you know, a Gashton Glock was the Steve Jobs of his era when it came to fire.
So it was the iPod, you're telling me the Glock, that was the iPod? Why? Because it doesn't jam, it doesn't mess up? What's so great about?
It's just super simple, bro. It's a few pieces. It's like a Honda Accord, better yet.
I love Honda Accords. Wait, 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 what, wait, sorry, I cut you off. Honda Accord, those cars do not die. You can't even break a Honda Accord, you know, they literally run for 300,000 miles. Yeah, they're the best.
When was the last time your microwave broke? They just don't break anymore. And so that's, that's what a Glock 19 is. It has a decent capacity, 15 in a magazine, one to chamber, so 16 rounds. Even if you don't have another magazine, it's a, it's a midsize, which means it's not a compact or a subcompact and it's not too big, so it's easy to conceal. You can change pieces out relatively easy, change the Glock, excuse me, change the trigger, change the sights, things like that. So sight unseen.
It's customized. So, so that's the best gun. And tell me this, why is it hard? When I go to the range and I'm shooting it from a handgun, I mean, maybe I just a bad shot, but is it the smaller the gun, is the less accurate it is? Like is a handgun that, I mean, seriously, because I'm shooting it from 15 feet, I'm like, how the hell did I miss it? I, I mean, sometimes I'm like, I mean, most of the time I hit it, but sometimes I miss it. I'm like, is this thing, it's, it's the gun, it's not me.
So smaller guns obviously recoil more as well as what you're talking about is your grip on that firearm. If you have a solid support hand, your fire, your follow-up shots will be much more accurate as well as you gotta have sights, man. And it's just like anything, you just gotta put reps in. You just gotta drive over and over and it's Kobe Bryant, taking those 10,000 hours, taking those 10,000 free throws and getting better at the skill set. It's a diminishable skill. If you don't practice, you will, it's not like riding a bike at all.